In accordance with section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this meeting on committee adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The committee is, uh, will consider applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to the property, permission to extend or, or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, or consent to serve a property to create new lots. And my name is Yim Chen, I will chair today's meeting and like to introduce our panel member, Katie Placier, and Sai Bayet, and also Mr. Philip Goss. And I would also like to acknowledge the land that we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Quidd, the Anasabey, and the Chipaway, and the Hurisuni, and the Wanda Peoples, and now it's home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is under, is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Quidd. Committee of adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format, and some participate, some will participate and make their submission in person, and others will, will be by electronic means, uh, through WebEx. And, and also the meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City of Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch the YouTube, uh, watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected with the computer tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the options of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry, and when the item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Will ask you also make your, mute your devices until you're called to speak. And those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held, and during this time, your camera will be enabled, and you'll only be visible during your five-minute speaking time, and all other, all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be restated as attending. For both in-person and virtual participants, committee adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use the share screen or any other panelist's control during, during their video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. Uh, how to receive a decision of the committee is, people who are attending in person today, who want to receive a copy of the decision on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for, by email. Those, please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the committee adjustment and also the Toronto local appeal body, which T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the local, uh, Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act in January, removed ways of third-party parties to appeal committee adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal the decision of committee adjustment, and as, and the appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. And the following will be the procedure of the, of the hearing. And then when an application, I will call the item listed on the agenda, in the order of the agenda, and when the applicant, application is not contested, the agent or applicant may proceed with the presentation if desired. When the committee does not require presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for decision, and each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address committee, and I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept material during the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first, and then will make a presentation to the committee on the application, and then note, um, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposal at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and for, and all those entitled to notice are in form of the changes. So then the individual, either in support or opposed to the application, will be invited to speak. Generally, we will call the people who are in person in the room today, and then we will then move, uh, to the speaker on WebEx. Committee member may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished the presentation, and when all these speakers are finished, the applicant or the agent will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. That, when that's finished, that will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be then taken into committee for decision. So, uh, that's all the procedure, and then now I would like to know whether there's a declaration of conflict interest from staff or a member for the afternoon session? No? Okay, and also there's another, there's whether there's some file to be closed, or, or deferral requests?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and panel members. No, there are no files to be closed or withdrawn this afternoon, and there are no deferral requests for this afternoon's agenda.
Okay.
I will announce, uh, in respect to recent regulatory changes under the Planning Act to modernize public notice requirements, enable municipalities to provide alternative notice of public hearings for minor variance and consent applications. Many municipalities in the Greater Toronto Area and beyond has chosen to provide alternative forms of notice as an interim measure during the Canada Post Labor Disruption. The city has gone beyond what the regulations require. Some of the measures staff have completed include posting on the City of Toronto website, posting links to the agendas and application information on our webpages, posting on city planning's social media channels, posting public hearing signs on the subject sites, and publishing the agenda list in the Toronto Star newspaper. All of these measures were taken for this hearing today.
Okay, uh, thank you, yeah. So, uh, we're ready for, uh, the first item is item seventeen A B C. The address is four three, uh, four thirty-six and four thirty-eight Pacific Avenue. This is to obtain a consent to serve the property into two residential lots, and is to, and the purpose for lot two is to construct a new three-story semi-detached building with front and rear basement walkout, and a front and rear balconies on the first, second, and third floors, and a south-side cover porch, and a rear parking pad, and also to construct a new one-story detached, uh, exterior, uh, building, which is a bicycle and, and waste, uh, waste storage in the rear yard, and there will be a total of six, six residential units on this lot. And also, um, the purpose for lot two is similar, is to construct, uh, construct a new three-story semi-detached with front and rear basement walkout, front and rear balconies on first, second, third floor, and the, also the, um, there's a north-side cover porch and a parking pad, but also, um, supporting the easement right-of-way, and also constructing one-story detached, uh, exterior building, which is a bicycle and a waste storage. And there will be a total of six residential dwelling on this lot two. We receive, um, a draft plan of the survey and a, and a plan of survey, site plan for plan elevation, six photographs, and also a planning justification report from the agent. We also will receive comment from, um, from community planning, and the transportation development, uh, review, and also a staff report from, um, uh, development engineering, and also a project, uh, and this, uh, adjacent construction review by MetroLink. Yeah, that's all the material we receive, um, and we are ready for the agent or the applicant.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, uh, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay. Alicia, you've been muted.
Uh, good afternoon, committee. My name is Alicia Montez, and I am the Registered Planner, Principal at Montero Planning Consultants. My address is one hundred Erie Street, Unit one oh two in Stratford, Ontario, and I'm here this afternoon as the agent on behalf of the applicant and owner with regards to the applications. Um, I do have a presentation that I would like to briefly walk, uh, the committee members through if it would so please them. However, if you have any questions or any further direction, um, please let me know which, uh, direction you would like to go.
Okay, thank you. Let me check whether the other panels have the same feeling. I, I, I think a presentation is...
Your presentation might be fine.
It's fine, because it's a little bit of a more complex development.
Sure, I'm fine, I'm fine either way, a presentation or questions.
Yes, okay.
It's very short.
Yeah, okay, it seems that a short presentation will be beneficial to us, so, uh, please go ahead, and, and can you tell us whether you want to bring some material up before we start the, the timer, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the presentation is up on the screen, so I am ready to start the timer.
You're ready, okay, so let's go, please, thank you, yeah.
Awesome, thank you very much. Um, so this afternoon, I'm here with respect to, uh, four thirty-six and four thirty-eight Pacific Avenue. So this is a property, if you could please move to the next slide, consists of a single lot located corner of Pacific Avenue in the public lane, which is generally north of the Dundas mixed-use corridor. It does form part of the transition between the mixed-use corridor and the established low-density residential area to the north. The neighborhood consists of a mix of low-rise, single, and multiple-unit housing, low-rise commercial, and high-rise modern, mixed-use intensification projects that are approved or under construction. The existing structure on the property is a two, uh, is two, two-story semi-detached units, which have been vacant for an extended period of time, and unfortunately, the foundation is unstable, and the cost to bring the building up to current standards is not viable. So my client, the current owner, uh, lives in the neighborhood and purchased the property last December with the goal of improving the appearance, safety, and functionality of the property. So I'd like to confirm, um, that there are mature trees as well on the front of the property, and that we are proposing to maintain those trees. So historically, the property has benefited from a right-of-way to the rear of the property, if you please move to the next slide, in which, uh, it's shared with surrounding uses and residences to provide access to the rear garages and parking areas, and I'd just like to take some time just to briefly go over this, as it is, does form part of some of the comments that were received as part of the Transportation Department.
Yes.
So in nineteen ninety-two, there was a right-of-way instrument, CA twenty-one, seven, seven, five, six, which was registered generally on the block that is bound by the lane to the south, vine to the north, Pacific, uh, to the east, and then to the west was a, a traditional, um, lot in the description, um, and as demonstrated on reference plan sixty-three R twenty-six fifty-five, which you see. So the subject property is outlined in red, the existing concrete garages are outlined in orange, those garages all service, uh, residences that front onto other properties. Um, and the intention of the right-of-way is to provide that shared access from the lane to those garages and parking pads at the rear of the properties identified in green. An additional clause in that instrument also added a right-of-way over our subject property, which you see in purple, and in twenty twenty-four, the courts, um, at our request and other landowners' request, lifted the portion applicable to our property as it was deemed redundant, no longer required. However, we will be, um, using a private right-of-way access over the green portion to access the parking pads at the rear of the property.
Okay.
Um, I'd want to highlight that notwithstanding that we are accessing at the rear of the property, the current and proposed lots will have frontage on a public right-of-way road, which is Pacific Ave, and the one lot will also have frontage on the public lane. So the creation of these properties is not contingent solely on access from a private right-of-way. We'll be removing all existing structures, severing the property into two parcels, and on each parcel, constructing a three-story apartment building with six units. Each building will have a height of ten point seven meters and a mix of two- and four-bedroom units, and each property is proposed to have an accessory building for waste storage, long-term bicycle storage, as well as exterior parking area and walkways. Next slide, please. There will be landscape please and short-term bicycle parking spaces as well, and you can see the preliminary rendering of one of the buildings, uh, there on the slide. Next slide, please. We've opted to design the buildings to be located and situated towards Pacific Ave, and tuck the parking at the rear off of the private driveway, which is similar to a lot of the developments in the area and the adjacent garages. All units are proposed to be accessed directly from outside, two visitor parking spaces as required by the zoning bylaw are proposed. We've appreciated the opportunity to work with staff over the last year to revise and update the proposed design and the development. Originally, the proposed buildings, if you move to the next slide, um, were located with a setback along the center lot line. Um, however, through the circulation process, it's come to our attention that city requires the road widening, so what we did in response was re, um, propose the severance line subject to the post-widening, uh, within the property, and then take the existing buildings and push them together at a zero sideyard setback. So these are the exact same buildings we had before as detached, separate apartment buildings, but because unexpectedly, we had to dedicate the road widening, um, the interior width of those, uh, buildings essentially allows for the living space and a bedroom, that's the, that's the width, so, um, those are the minimum widths we're hitting as per OVC, so we opted to move the buildings together, which is why you see this semi-detached concept, which seems slightly unusual perhaps, so I'd like to provide some rationale for that. If you move on to the next slide, please, we've talked about the consents. So as I mentioned, we'll be creating two parcels, each will have access from the private, uh, or from the private right-of-way, will also have access from Pacific, and there will be, um, access from the lane for part two. Moving on to the next slide. I'm happy to go over any questions that you may have about the variances, but all in all, the intent of the variances is to achieve an ultimate built form. The property will be fenced, um, will have landscaping added, the trees will be maintained, um, and the built form is similar to others otherwise proposed in the area. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and we respectfully ask that committee approve the applications this evening, as the owner is a dedicated home builder and developer, and is ready to move forward in the spring with bringing these rental units to the market.
Thank you very much, yeah, it's very good, um, information, yeah. Uh, any questions? Yes, please, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, so coming, uh, back to the easement, you're confident that, uh, after the severance, the easement will still apply to both, both new properties?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, as a committee member, yes, uh, we are. So we have pulled, um, and provided to staff the deed, the easement document, um, and the reference plans in which it was created. Um, so we've also engaged with the lawyer as part of lifting, um, the portion applied to the property to confirm that that access remains, and we just simply lifted the portion that was part of a separate clause in that deed. So in short, yes, we're confident that that is an established right-of-way that's currently being used, and we will be able to use it moving forward.
But, but even once it's severed without anything else, um, without any, like, um, so sometimes we see easements referred to in, in the plan to sever, uh, you're confident that it'll apply, so it, I'm, to, to both severed properties? That's the advice you've been given?
Uh, yes, through you, Madam Chair, as a committee member, that is the advice we've been given. Um, we are, um, we, we would entertain a condition, uh, effectively, that would be to the satisfaction of, of staff as part of a clearance of condition, um, that that is, um, either modified as part of the description of the property, um, because what we're, what we're effectively dealing with is a very out-of-date, old easement that generally applied to the entire block, um, and was not specifically defined, um, through how we traditionally define it now. So, um, this is, uh, the, our understanding with our lawyer, um, and our consultants, that this is the legal as-of-right permissions, and that the severance of the property will not hinder the ability to use, um, the green portion, which is outside of the property, to continue to access the rear of the property.
Okay, and, um, the current condition, so the, the easement that you removed, uh, is that, um, portion of property, uh, within or outside of the fenced yard in the current condition?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, as a committee member, that's a great question. It's actually within the fenced yard. So, um, it is currently fenced, there is some vegetation along there, so it has not for quite a period of time been used, um, as part of that, which is why the judge, um, in reviewing it deemed it redundant, um, and agreed with the removal of it.
Okay, thanks. And the, the property as it is now is actually a semi-detached, so, um, you're kind of maintaining that, uh, with your proposal?
Uh, correct, um, correct, committee member, it is a semi-detached dwelling. Um, it was built on two lots, eh, effectively as part of the subdivision, but those, um, it was, uh, it was never severed, uh, so it was maintained as a semi-detached, two semi-detached units. So we're just looking to sever it, um, and increase, uh, the number of purpose-built rental units and replace the existing dilapidated structure, which we're having problems with currently.
All right, thanks. Any other questions?
Just a quick one for my own ignorance, ignorance here, uh, just the discussion around the easement issue, um, you, there's some documentation that still is outstanding, I take it. So, uh, my question would be, if we were to approve the application, uh, would there be a condition perhaps that suggests that no, okay, no?
Through the chair, the, the draft R-plan should be showing all easements and parts, and so the draft R-plan should be showing this easement as cited in easement number X, Y, Z. So that needs to be on the R-plan, and that was something that was flagged, uh, to the applicant. If they wish to proceed without it, if there is any sort of issue or error or problem in the future, they would have to come back, um, because it is not clear where that easement is and why it is not listed.
Okay, I, 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 yeah, I hear you, except that, um, maybe it would be covered or taken care of, if you read the, uh, engineering staff report, there are a lot of conditions. I think one of the conditions is that they are required to submit drawings and also legal documents, uh, uh, to, um, to illustrate all this right-of-way, subjective right-of-way or SS purpose, that's condition number two. So if we impose all this probably, they have to then submit, right? Yeah, or, 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 we just have to impose this anyway, despite whether we accept the drawings that do not have those, uh, right-of-way, uh, drawn, yeah.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to, um, thank you very much for, for highlighting that. So we have reviewed all of the staff comments, we appreciate all of the, the collaboration with staff, um, et cetera, and so we are supportive of those conditions as proposed in the civil engineering, um, and so we'd like the opportunity to be able to, um, because it is such a unique situation, and that it's a historic easement that's not necessarily defined, it's registered on title, but it is not physically, um, defined, it's more of the concept of a blanket easement, um, that's where we'd like to, um, to continue to resolve with staff how to best demonstrate that on a plan. We have the legal documents, but it's that disconnect between, um, the spatial allocation of those rights, um, on, on a plan versus what the document in fact says. So we're in support of the conditions as proposed, um, and, uh, we'd like to be able to kind of continue working with staff to clear that condition, but also be able to move forward, uh, with the detailed design and, and building permit as such.
Yeah, because it seems that even, well, all the conditions the engineering asking for is actually, uh, also touch that, they seem that they would like to also have the, uh, the corners, the subject, all, all on, on, they noted on plans, right? That's part of what you have to submit to them, yeah?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, if I may, we have cleared, uh, that condition, so we have resubmitted a reference plan that does have the datum, um, as well as the corners, uh, values, et cetera, so that, we've received acknowledgement from the engineering department, um, and planning staff that that has been addressed to their satisfaction, so the remaining conditions remain outstanding. However, we're supportive of that condition being included, um, as part of today's approval, and we just acknowledge that we can formally clear that condition once the approval's been issued.
Okay, yeah, all right. Yes, please, yeah.
Um, one of the aspects of your plan that I find, um, a, a little unique is the, um, access to the units on, um, on the parcel to the north. Um, you know, on the parcel to the south, having the sort of stairway in the middle that accesses it from the public laneway seems not problematic, but on the north side, it's sort of right-adjacent to the next home. Uh, have you, uh, or your clients reached out to the owner of that home and had any comments from them about, uh, and, and also it seems that you're going to construct much closer to that, to that existing home, or am I, or am I misunderstanding that?
Um, uh, through you, Madam Chair, as a committee member, um, yes, so my client did draft a, a letter, uh, explaining who they are, um, what they're proposing to do, what maybe some of the impacts of, of construction, et cetera, would be, um, for this area, and his contact information, so in speaking with him, he's heard from a few of the neighbors who've asked questions more around the preservation of trees and the impact of construction. Um, to my knowledge, we haven't, I haven't directly received any comments from the adjacent landowners on that side, but it's my understanding that everybody in the neighborhood was circulated, um, that letter in addition, um, and the signs were posted on the property in accordance with the Planning Act as well. Um, so I haven't had a direct consultation with them, um, but our onset plan has always considered, uh, constructing within that close of the property line. Um, it's just that we moved the severance sign effectively, so it's always been side entrances from both sides, um, and that hasn't to date been something that's been raised by staff or a member of the community.
Okay, and, um, is one of the variances you're seeking a sideyard setback on that side, or, or not?
Um, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, as a committee member, so the, there are variances for that side, they are related to encroachment of stairs and porch effectively into a sideyard setback. Um, we are in compliance with the sideyard setback for a building of this size and of this type, um, so we are just looking for a reduction. Effectively, there's, there's regulations in the bylaw that allow encroachments into the side yard of, up to, um, a setback of point three, however, we're at effectively zero, um, given the side yard setback and, and the proposed porch, so that's where we must seek a variance, however, there is no, uh, variance for the sideyard setback of the building.
Okay, and that variance that we're talking about, that's variance nine?
Ten, I mean.
Yes, that, uh, nine on part, part...
Sorry, I'm trying to zoom in on the screen.
It's part, lot two, right, you're talking about B, yeah?
Uh, yes, if I may, I'm just going to open my own copy so I can zoom in. Yes, so there is a reduction, um, I believe it is nine.
On the south side.
And because, and it's because of that access that's right on the lot line, that you also have the variance seven, that you're not providing soft landscaping along that side?
Yes, that is correct. So typically, there would be the requirement for, um, yes, the, the soft landscaping and the encroachment. In this case, because we do have, uh, the building lifted slightly to allow enough natural light for the ground floor units, we need to introduce stairs, which then we need relief from that side yard, and there isn't sufficient space to be able to accommodate a landscape buffer in that area, however, anywhere that there is, uh, landscaping adjacent to the property lines, we will be, uh, incorporating that landscape buffer, and the lands will be fenced on the north side on that property.
Okay, but I, do you see that you don't have any other soft landscaping variances? Is that correct? So you are meeting the front and rear, uh, requirements?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, yes, that is correct. We are deficient on the overall site landscaping, however, we do exceed the minimum soft landscaping proportion of the bylaw, so we are in compliance with those variant, with those regulations.
Okay, thanks. Uh, and you're saying you actually exceed it? Do you know by how much for the, in terms of soft landscaping?
Yes, um, through you, Madam Chair, if you'd give me one moment, I have the plans here, I'm just going to zoom in. Um, if you would like to refer to, um, the architectural site plan, um, or the site plans, there should be a zoning chart on that plan. So we're at sixty-two percent of landscaping area is soft landscaping, whereas the minimum is fifty percent. So we're forty-two percent of fifty required for overall landscaping, but of fifty, sixty-two percent, um, is soft landscaping.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one perhaps, if I, just another quick question. It's just related to, be with me, second floor rear balconies. You've got rear balconies on, on the second floor for both sides. But I note that some of them may have overlook issues. So I was just wondering for part one, which is the north, northerly property, would it be okay to have some screening, privacy screening on the north and south sides? And for part two, only on the north side, because then you've got a laneway on the south?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the committee member, yes, thank you for your comments. That was not something that we had factored in, but we do appreciate the comments. And we would be open to adding the screening as requested for those balconies.
Thank you.
So you can tell us exactly the words, yeah, okay. All right, so any other questions? No, so we, we don't have any more questions now. We are in committee, yeah. Actually, when I look at the current situation, I think this is a good improvement to the site.
And I think when I look at the layouts of, of the units as well, they're reasonable sizes. Certainly more accommodating of more than one individual, so that's kind of nice to see.
Yes.
But it's a well-thought-out project.
Also, nice to see a range of sizes within one structure, I think.
The only thought I have is on the, on the balcony screening, I might put it only on the very far north to the right because otherwise these balconies are just kind of looking at each other in their own joint parking. And they're pretty small, so sometime, you know, the screening can make the space seem a little more enclosed. So I'd be more inclined to do the one, like you say, to the north that overlooks neighbors, but not, not necessarily require them to do the others, and then they can.
On the north property, which is part, is a part one, what's that part?
Part one.
It's a part one, okay.
Do you think only north side of part one?
That's sort of my thought, but.
North edge of, of part one.
So they don't have an overlook on the neighboring property on the other side, on the north side?
Yeah, so is the second, is the second and the third, both second and third, they have the third floor balconies too?
I think for part one, so it would just be the north side and for part two.
North side, but from, from, of, of both second and third floor balcony.
Is it second and third? I think so, yeah, second and third.
Yeah, all right.
And part two, it would just be the north side, not the south side. Because the overlook on the south side would be the lane.
Okay, and then, but did anyone get all that? Okay. I, I thought there was only one side you want, one.
Yeah, exactly, just one, just on the part.
Yeah, only one part, not both.
Yeah, just one side. And to, to, to your point, I think it's, otherwise it just becomes a little.
Exactly, otherwise it just becomes boxed in because they're so small. And if there were lots of neighbors.
It diminishes the use of the balcony.
Okay, so Philip, can you, can you put it in clearer wording? Because I got confused a little bit, which part?
Well, it's, it sounds like the members are, are in favor. So maybe I'll just go towards a, a motion. But just my comment before I make the motion is the, the one thing that I was a bit concerned with was that hard scaping on the north side and the proximity to that property. But no one has shown up from that property. It sounds like they've spoken with them. And the landscaping is mitigated by the fact that there's more land, soft landscaping on the site than is required. So I think that mitigates against that edge being hurt. Okay, so I would move to approve the, the severance and the variances on both applications for a lot, for part one, with the condition that the north side of the second and third floor rear balconies be constructed with privacy screening and with no other conditions other than the engineering conditions. But you're just the standard engineering conditions or were there additional?
Through the chair, so for the consent, there's the standard engineering conditions, and then there is additional engineering conditions, which engineering has provided correspondence that has cleared. Condition number one A has been satisfied, but conditions numbers one B, two, three, four, and five are outstanding. So those would recommend to include. And then for the minor variance application, engineering is also recommending condition one to submit revised site plan drawings to show the spot elevations along the property line and building edges to demonstrate positive drainage for further review and acceptance. There is also a MetroLinks report with the warning clause, should you choose to include that.
Okay, so I'll be consistent and I won't include the MetroLinks, but I, I will. So my motion includes the privacy screening for the part one on the north side. And then for both minor variances, the engineering condition and the rest of the non-cleared engineering conditions for the consent, plus the standard engineering conditions.
And through the chair, the privacy screening is only for part one, not part two.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Okay, that's clear, right? So we have a second for that motion? Yeah, please, here, and all in favor of those conditions, all in favor, yes. It's approved, you know, with all those conditions. Thank you. And now we are on item eighteen A, B, C. It's forty-two and forty-four, Vanilla Avenue. This is obtained to, to survey the property into, into undersized residential lot. And the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling containing two residential units will be maintained and unaltered. The existing two-story semi-detached containing two residential units with an attached three-car garage will be maintained and unaltered. We have received a draft plan of survey and also a survey site plan for plant elevations. And revised site plan for plant elevations and four photographs and couple letters from the agent and also planning justification from the agent and presentation material from the, from the agent. And we receive a transportation engineering correspondent and staff report from, from development engineering and also community planning. And we have not received any letter of support or, or oppositions.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and all registered speakers.
And.
Michael, you've been muted. Michael, you've been muted.
Through the chair, Michael, if you're listening, staff are going to try to call you since it appears you're unable to connect. So please look out for the phone call. Staff are phoning you now.
Hello?
Hi, yeah, we can hear you now, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, my apologies for that. I'm not sure I was able to hear you. I'm not sure what was going on audio. Is everything connected okay now?
Yes, yeah, it seems that we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, my name's Michael Barton, I'm the agent. Yes, for the, I'm the agent for the application. I prepared the, the material that you, you were referring to.
Okay, can you give us your names and address for our records, please?
Yes, it's Michael Barton. My address is fourteen eighty-nine Abbeywood Drive in Oakville. My company is MB One Development Consulting.
And I assume that we, you do not have any opposition, so it's not a contested application. But you do have some revised site plan. Do you explain the revised site plan, why the revise and, yeah?
Yes, so the revised site plan was for the retained lot only, so that's the parts two and three. So what we had done was added some soft landscaping to an addition, to the existing asphalt area that was in front of the, of the unit, just to provide a little bit more. So it's actually in the boulevard, it's outside the property. But the property, the, the retained lot had no, effectively no soft landscaping in the boulevard while the conveyed lot has a strip along the street. So it's effectively going to provide similar soft landscaping in the asphalt portion that's shown on the site plan to enhance that condition. That's the, really the only change to the existing built form condition on the property would be adding that landscaping to make it better. There's no change to the structures, no change to the, the parking configuration on the property. So that, that's the only change was the addition of that soft landscaping.
Okay, thank you, yeah. All right, so let me check whether the panel wants the presentation after that. No, you have questions?
I do have a question.
So we, we do not require a presentation from you, but we do have questions. Let's go into questions.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my question is just about the garage at the back. Right now, is it used for, you know, both, both parts? Because in future, it'll really only be available for the one part. So I'm just wondering if that's been discussed and how that's planning on working.
Yes, so it, it does work primarily today for the part two and three. I discussed it with the owner. They, they may consider obtaining an easement in future to provide right-of-way over that garage to allow parking, one vehicle parking for part one. But they hadn't provided that at this point because the intent of the application is effectively to allow separate ownership. But it is something that they're, they're going to look into, but hadn't considered that yet at this point. So there is the opportunity to provide a right-of-way in favor of part one to one of those parking spaces, but we hadn't provided that as part of the application.
Okay, but an easement wouldn't provide ownership of the space within a garage. So it doesn't really solve that, that problem, so.
You're correct. It would be, just be a right-of-way over the, for a parking space. So part one will have no parking as part of its ownership. But there may be opportunity to provide right-of-way to one of those spaces in the garage, but it would still be owned as part of parts two and part three.
Okay, so it's, well, I, I think rather than an easement, what really would make sense would just be, you know, a rental agreement for the space to someone in the, you know. But, but I guess my question really, because what matters to the committee is what's happening now, is that the owner is aware that, you know, legally speaking, any of those apartments in the front, you know, absent some other separate agreement, will not have access to the garage.
Oh, absolutely, yes. It would be, what you're suggesting is probably the more efficient approach to just have a separate rental agreement. But they are aware that at this time, part one would not have parking and it would be part two and three that would have the garage. Yes, they are aware of that.
So, so my, my, my other question then, in that case, the reason for this severance, what's the reason? Is because they just want to own half of the building? Different owner want to own one half of the building?
So there's a couple of reasons. So today, it, it has two, it's detached, semi-detached duplex dwelling. Each side has a duplex in it today. There's one hydro connection, so there's a desire to also have this separate ownership to allow separate hydro connections to each of the units. So there would be a lot of separate ownership. It would allow for separate hydro servicing as well to the individual unit. So that it allows for more efficient, you know, utility and service of the property as well.
Oh, okay, so that is, but physically, the building will not, there will be no new constructions proposed at this moment, right?
No, it's, it's, effectively, the, the interior works actually already being done. They're legally recognized, it, it's because it's one property, it's recognized as, as being one structure. But in the interior space functions as the semi-detached unit. So any work that would be done would be completely interior. There isn't much room to work on the property anyway. But it would be all interior work, minor interior renovations. But they, it does function today as, as two separate semi-detached duplexes.
Okay.
What do you know about the wall between what will be the two properties that will ultimately be the party wall? Like, what type of construction does, does that have? And the question is, you know, say someone in the future owns one part and wants to demolish it, you know, how would that affect the other part?
Yeah, so it's been constructed to requirements for separate semi-detached units. So it, it would function the same as any typical semi-detached that has OBC, that meets OBC requirements for the materials and fire separation between units. Certainly, it's not, it's all, it's never easy to have one unit demolished, you know, that's semi-detached. But it is to the OBC requirements, the materials that are in between. And, but again, there's no intent that that would happen. The intent is to, to continue to function as is, yeah.
But, but do you know, is it masonry or all you can advise is that OBC is fine with this?
I, I believe it's masonry, and, and I guess that they have submitted permanent applications previously. So again, my understanding is that the materials, that I believe masonry, but certainly providing the fire separation and structural requirement.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so any other questions? So we're in committee. We do not have any more questions for you, so we are in committee now, okay?
Just start off, I think it's very much a technical, even though there's a whole lot of variances. These, I should have asked the question, I'm going to assume that all the variances are existing circumstance because there's no construction to be done, nothing's going to be altered. It's merely a separation of the two semis. And presumably, that has triggered all these variances that are being requested. So it's very much a technical, technical issue. So I don't see any, any concerns with this particular application.
All right, so do you like to make a motion then?
Certainly, unless colleagues have any other questions. Yeah, I'd like to move a motion to approve this application. We do have engineering conditions and also planning conditions.
Through the chair, so the community planning conditions are recommending approval to site plan with respect to the soft landscaping, which however, is outside of the subject property. It is in the city boulevard. Members cannot impose conditions off the subject site. So I would not recommend including that condition. It is noted for the record that the applicant submitted the revised plan, so the revised plan is part of the file. And as always, decisions are to be constructed in accordance, substantially in accordance with the plans on file for permit.
Excellent, thank you.
And there is additional engineering conditions as well, in addition to the standard.
Thank you.
And so we, we only have the severance engineering conditions?
Engineering conditions.
Yeah, okay, so uh, we have a second to the motion?
Sure, I have to second it.
Philip, okay, all in favor with those conditions? All in favor, it's approved unanimously, thank you, it's approved. So now, uh, we are going to uh, 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 have an item number nineteen, thirteen nineteen Blue Street West. This is to obtain uh, consent to sever the property into two mixed-use lots and to create new easement and right-of-way. And we have a draft, uh, so, uh, draft plan of the survey and a survey and site plan for plant elevations and a letter uh, and uh, from the agent and also with cover letter in response to development engineering from the agent and decision and the abuse report and also functional surface stormwater management report and uh, uh, hydro geological review report and the part list, um, presentation material and then from the agent and also from the advisory report from MetroLink, service report from groundwater summary form. We also receive um, from community plan, communication from community planning. Uh, we have two form of communications corresponding from them and also from development engineer. We also have staff report from community planning and also advisory report from MetroLinks. We haven't received any letter of opposition or support.
Through you, Madame Chair, we have the agent in person and our registered speakers.
Okay.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Ingrid.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Oh, hi, sorry.
Yeah, I was trying to listen from the online, waiting for someone.
In person for a change.
Yeah, 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 welcome, welcome. So give us your name and address just for the record.
Uh, my name is Ingrid Bosley with Kingset Capital and my address is forty King Street West.
Yes, okay, so is 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 seem, uh, do we want to have a presentation or we go straight to questions?
I I would go straight to questions, uh.
Okay, so.
But if the fellow members want a presentation, I'm not going to.
I think it's fairly, and your presentation materials are fairly straightforward.
Okay, so.
I have the benefit of this is the third time this, uh, this is before me. Both of the previous hearings, you just like coming before us.
We just like coming here, yeah.
Yeah, I I think it was Kingset itself at the first one and then I think it was someone from City of Toronto that was at the second one.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, for the MetroLinks, yes.
And and creating all these easements away is really just to, so they're making the development for how it how it works, right, how it operates.
That's correct.
You require this this kind of severance.
That's that's correct, so in, just by way of very brief background, the lands were rezoned in twenty twenty-two as one contiguous building.
Yes.
And then in twenty twenty-four, a minor variance was approved to separate the buildings into two so that the site could be developed in phases, just in response to the complexity of the market that it is today.
Mm-hmm.
And so basically, the severance is is the next step, which is flowing from the minor variance that was previously approved. And so this is just to create the two parcels, which are completely separate by way of servicing, access, parking, loading, et cetera. Um, and um, the intent is to implement blanket easements on a temporary basis until such time as the properties are developed and then specific easements can be created at that time.
Oh, okay, yeah, it seems that we also we receive a staff report that command us to approve. This is quite unusual, they come out so, yeah, so supportive, yeah, all right, so.
Just just have a question, if I may, of curiosity. Uh, great project, I think it's the right place for for this type of project. What's the, what's the sort of mix of units that are going to be developed eventually, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, is there a mixture?
So right now, we're looking at um, basically the city's official plan requirements, which sets a a minimum of ten percent of three bedrooms, fifteen percent two bedrooms, and then the remainder a mix of of one bedrooms and studios. Um, but at the end of the day, um, the minimums will have to be met. Um, but the the ultimate mix of the remainder is kind of to be determined based on what the demand is for that area.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, maybe you can help us with the planning conditions? Because there's the one planning condition that's in the report, but there's also an email that has seven conditions, two of which have been struck out. So I'm wondering if we should impose one to five from the email?
Through the chair, so those aren't actual official conditions from community planning? I would assume that would be handled through the other site plan condo applications that are in process or forthcoming. That was just kind of general correspondence between the applicant and community planning, uh, not in relation to the specific consent. Community planning did put forward a report dated November twenty-fourth in the late folder where they don't have any conditions.
No, I have seen that, but this is what I'm trying to make sense of.
Yeah.
The email does refer to severance, but um, is is this what's going on?
So we had, we had done a lot of really great upfront work with planning staff leading up to the application and and basically eliminating the need for conditions. And that's simply because um, with respect to the community benefits, um, those are already secured in the zoning bylaw, which sets out what those community benefits are and then further requires that they be secured in a section thirty-seven agreement. So based on that, all of those obligations are already secured. Um, and so therefore, it it's it's no longer, it doesn't need to be a condition.
Okay, yeah, because like, for instance, number four, it says, "The following shall be a condition of approval for the severance application," and then it says.
And then we had discussions subsequent to that and we kind of worked out the details.
Yeah, and that's October twenty-three in the report, it's it is more recent.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because the the, yeah, that's a little bit confused too. I I was because, yeah, the the new report didn't say any, uh, mention any conditions, so. All right, thank you, that's, I clarify that, yeah, so any other questions? Okay, so we do not have any more questions, uh, we are in committee now, yeah.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to move for approval. It it made a lot of sense when the design was changed to separated into two towers.
Yeah.
Um, I see no reason not to sever so that those two towers are on separate lots if that's going to facilitate development as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so for those reasons, I think it meets the criteria in the Planning Act for severance.
Mm-hmm.
And I would move to approve the application to sever or to grant consent uh, subject to the planning conditions set out in the staff report.
Through the chair, no planning conditions? Do you mean engineering?
No, I said the planning condition, uh, subject in the planning report, because there is the one in the most recent report and, but I, of course, also the standard engineering.
Sorry, if staff could just pull up the planning report on the screen, I don't believe there is a condition.
I don't think there's any.
There's no condition from community planning?
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking at the wrong application.
Oh, that's okay. Through the, through the chair, in terms, in terms of conditions, so just to streamline, make it a little simpler. So for engineering, there are, so in addition to the standard consent conditions, there are also additional engineering conditions. Engineering submitted correspondence where they have cleared condition number one already. So the only remaining condition or additional condition from engineering is condition number two with respect to municipal numbering.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah, there's still some, yeah, they they still have to do that, that's why, yeah, so.
So with that, with that cleared up, I'll move to approve it, subject to engineering condition two and standard engineering conditions.
Excellent, I'll second that, yeah.
Miss, by a second, and with the, yeah, C condition. Okay, with those conditions, uh, all in favor of approval? All in favor unanimously approved, thank you, with those conditions, thank you. And, uh, uh, number twenty, is it, is it? Oh, it is, I thought it's, it's not differ, right, it's not the other, okay, thank you, sorry. Number, uh, it's sixty-two Hill Home Road. This is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a two-car integral garage and a front widened driveway and a front cover porch with stairs and a rear basement walkout and a rear grand floor cover deck. And a rear second and fifth floor balconies and a rear ingrown swimming pool. And to construct one-story ossery building, which contains a washroom and a mechanical pool, a room. And um, and we receive uh, the minutes of the last public hearing and also revised site plan for plant elevations and a cover letter from the agent, abuse report and the three D rendering of the proposed and a shadow study from agent. We receive also oppositions from sixty Hill Homes and also sixty-four Hill Homes. Uh, do, how many speakers we?
Through you, Madame Chair, we have the agent in person. We have one speaker in person and one speaker online.
Okay, thank you, oh, it seems that you do, they they both want to speak in proposition also. It's, yeah, you do have some oppositions here and please give us your name and address and we would like to have a brief presentation from you, five minutes, thank you, yeah.
Good afternoon, my name is Sean Galbraith, planner here on behalf of the application. Nice to be back in person.
Oh, yeah, it's always the the best way, yeah.
Uh, so since the application was last before you, um, uh, it has undergone some notable revisions.
Okay.
Uh, in particular, based on feedback that we received the last time. Um, the uh, primary changes are the removal of the iceberg basement entirely.
Okay.
Um, the the original proposal had a circular driveway that has been removed and the driveway has been relocated to one side, the opposite side of where it used to be. And that is to protect um, and retain a street tree, which addressed urban forestry's concerns. Um, and also the amount of soft landscaping in the front yard has been increased and so now the deficiency is less than one square meter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so this has um, resulted in, we still have the same number of variances, but the variances have changed. Um, and so the variances that have been eliminated compared to the last time uh, is the FSI variance, the front yard setback variance and the driveway, the two-point-of-entry driveway has been removed. Uh, the variances that have been improved relative to last time um, are the building length and depth. And last time, the length and depth were incorrectly calculated by the zoning examiner, which is why we had the deferral. Um, and then the soft landscaping has also been improved. And then we've added, uh, there are two new variances for the number of balconies and the size of the balconies. Two balconies at the rear have been added, one on the second floor of one of the bedrooms. And on the third floor, a emergency egress balcony has been added.
Okay, all right.
Um, so if the cover letter could be brought up that I submitted, uh, that'd be great. There's a view of the existing uh, street. You can see the the existing house in the middle, a newer rebuild on the right and um, a more original house on the left.
Mm-hmm.
If you could scroll down, please, that's existing backyard, keep going, there. Um, so this shows the proposed, uh, the, basically the changes from the one that he were, when it was here last time. The blue is the original house or the originally proposed house last time and yellow is its, the large iceberg basement that has been eliminated. The red dotted line is the uh, new proposed footprint of the building. The building has sort of two components, I would say. There is the three-story main component and a smaller one-story rear sort of bump out off the kitchen. The one-story rear bump out doesn't really, I would say, have any impacts on neighboring properties. It's one point five meters deep. Um, and so I would presume that the concerns from neighbors primarily pertain to the the three-story massing. The depth of the three-story portion of the building was done to align approximately with the house to the, uh, I believe it's sixty Hill Home. If you could scroll down, please, keep going, uh, there. Uh, if you look on here, uh, this is the length and the depth variance. Uh, the red dotted line on the, uh, to the side, that is the depth of the, uh, budding house. And so the the revised design basically seeks to match what is, what exists on the property next door. Uh, and that triggers variances. Uh, if you could scroll down, uh, this is, that that photo there. So you can see that basically, the, this is how much the existing house next door extends beyond the current property. Um, there are windows facing it, so, you know, this this relationship between houses has existed for fifty years um, and there haven't been concerns of privacy and overlook. Um, and so I I would suggest that there will not be when the, if a new building is approved and constructed on the subject site.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with regards to the um, uh, the balcony variances, if the renderings could be brought up, please. The, it's a large file, sorry. So this is the the proposed rendering. You can see the house relative to the houses on either side. In my opinion, I don't believe that it's out of scale, there's no height variance, there's no main wall height variance. Um, it's aligned now to the front yard setback, uh, which is a little bit behind the the newer house to the side. I, there's, I can keep, I'll, I will wrap it up by saying, um, side yard setbacks, there are side yard setback variants as well. That is the most commonly approved side variants in the neighborhood. There's only one application on Hill Home that has not had a side yard setback variance. Um, it's extremely common.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You will be back anyway.
I assume so.
Okay, uh, okay, let's have the other speakers then. We will, we will hear now the in-person speaker. Okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity. My name is John Krieger, I'm of sixty-four Hill Home Road.
Okay, so you're right next door, yeah.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I I'm here to speak about the notice of objection filed in respect of this application for variances for the new home to be built on this site.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as the committee will see from the Application Center website, this is the third attempt by the homeowner to approve variances for the subject property.
Mm-hmm.
In its first visit to the Committee of Adjustments in February twenty twenty-five, the applicant sought the approval of variances for the construction of a new home, uh, which were refused by the committee in a final decision dated March fourth, twenty twenty-five. Most of the variances requested today are in fact larger than those already refused by decision March twenty twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant reapplied, they sought deferral of its application before the committee on June eleventh. At that hearing, the committee strongly recommended that the representative of the applicant seek neighbor consultations in respect of its plans and to provide evidence to the committee that those consultations took place. Well, here we are five months later and there have been no neighbor consultations and nothing submitted to the applicate, with this application, evidencing that those consultations took place. On September thirtieth, I received an email from the planner with a set of new plans, which are the same plans that are submitted with this application. I responded to the planner and expressed our concerns and asked for a discussion or meeting.
Mm-hmm.
My request was ignored. To this date, neither the representative of the owner nor the owner have taken any steps to alleviate our concerns, none. Again, I should point out that to this day, we have never met or heard from the owner of the property. As stated during the first attendance before the committee in February, I should be clear that this objection is not to oppose the applicant's right to build a new house. In fact, we don't have a problem with a new house being built. This is about voicing our concerns with respect to the process of neighbor consultations, concerns with the variances requested and its impact on the site and adjacent properties, and the applicant's failure to satisfy all four tests under section forty-five-one of the Planning Act. Our written submissions provide quite a bit of details to support our view that the applications failed to satisfy all four tests under Section 45.1 of the Planning Act. We believe the committee should refuse the current application because, one, the massing of the house and the variances requested are too large for this property and creates adverse impacts to the neighbors. Two, as set out in the objection letter, there has been a lack of notice received. And three, there's been no neighbor consultations as strongly recommended by the committee in June 2025. I take it that the committee has had the opportunity to review the letter of objection dated November 18th submitted in respect of this application. I'll focus my comments on the responding additional materials that were submitted by the planner, which he was referring to, uh, just earlier. The proposed new house is about a thousand square feet larger than the plans that were already refused by the committee. There is no request for an FSI variance, but it's important to note that the plans provide for almost 100% FSI coverage when the general accepted past approvals in the area are substantially less than that. The applicant is suggesting that the FSI variances do not apply to this property on the basis that the house has a secondary unit. We believe this has serious negative implications for the neighborhood and the city of Toronto and that it is essentially appears to be a workaround to the FSI requirements that have been a key element to the committee's consideration. Specifically, this house has a walkout basement which the application suggests can render the house as a duplex. In my respectful view, I don't believe the massing of the house and FSI should be ignored. The planner suggested that the variances for length and are less than some of the other houses in the area. What I would point out is that you have to look at the size of the lot. Included in the application in the additional materials, you'll see just what's shown there is this is a triangulated lot and it's shorter on one side than the other. So the FSI, while I said it's close to 100%, the reality is that the length consumes much of the backyard of this property. There's a very, very small backyard and that has extremely negative impact on the light and the privacy in our yard, which is to the left of that diagram. The impact of the increased FSI may be about four meters, but it has a substantial impact on us as a neighbor. And with that, subject to any other questions, those are my submissions.
Okay. Any question to this speaker? Actually, I do have a question just for, because I, I, I heard that, uh, you don't not feel you have enough for consultation, but now you're here. I'd like to hear from you. If you, the most impactful for you is the length, right?
There, there's actually two, I, you know, I, I worked within the time that I was allocated, but there's two material implications. One is the length of the property, particularly on the side that are adjacent to our property. And the second is a request for a substantial variance in the side yard setback. I should point out, the applicant's representative was talking about variances for side yard setback. When the house at sixty-four Hill Home was rebuilt, there was neighbor consultation. The neighbor at sixty-two Hill Home, the property that is currently the subject of this application, expressed concern with any type of variance on that side yard setback. We respected the side yard setback and we asked for no variance on the side yard adjacent to this particular property. Now, when that property is being rebuilt, they're trying to push the boundary and asking for a substantial variance.
I see, I understand. So, uh, because the required one is 1.5 meter.
Correct.
Yeah, uh, you want to stay that, uh, as.
That is correct and that is what is between our property and the lot line.
And then they, they asking for two feet over, um, okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's the two thing that you, you, you think that is impact, too, too much impact to your property.
Yes, we do have some concerns with the, but the size of the balcony. I don't particularly have a concern too much with the balconies that they're asking, but they are substantial balconies and we believe that that will create an issue with respect to overlook and privacy in the yard. But I would say that those would, that would be a secondary concern as opposed to the length and the side yard setback. Again, I would point out again, if you see the, the property, the way it's structured is it does have a triangulated corner and the property, you could see the outline, it's in faint, uh, uh, pen or pencil, but the outline of the property is the length of the proposed house on this property is substantially longer than the property to the left. And the impact, uh, on that property, given that the light to this property will be significant as well as some significant privacy concerns. If you follow along the line of that triangulated line to the left of the property, you'll see it continues on. So the property at sixty-four Hill Home is entirely triangulated and it's a narrow, a, a, a reduced-sized lot.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I see the orientation, yeah, okay, thank, thank you. Your, your property is on the left, right?
That is correct, to the left of that diagram.
Okay, thank you. Any question to this speaker? Okay, thank you very much, yeah. That, thank you for your clarification, maybe, right there, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Peter, you've been muted.
Thank you, good afternoon. Can the committee hear me well?
Yes, yeah. Please give us your name and address and, yeah, you have five minutes to address the panel, yeah.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My name is Peter Voltzinas of Castles Brock and Blackwell LLP. Um, our office's address is forty Temperance Street. And I'm appearing on behalf of Mr. Kerbal, who is one of the owners of sixty Hill Home Road, which is the property directly next to the eastern lot line of the subject property.
Okay, uh, sixty, I mean, uh, sixty Hill Home, okay. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, so you have five, uh, maybe we can start, uh, when it's, it's ready? Uh, we start the clock, yeah, thank you. Because he was just telling us the name before. Okay. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. And so just to begin my submissions, our, our client similarly objects to the applicant's revised application and, and this is for several reasons. Um, I understand the committee is in receipt of our, our objection letter, which is dated November 19th, 2025. And in that letter, we provide in, in great detail the history of this application as well as why the applicant's latest attempt at its proposal continues to fail to meet the Planning Act test for the approval of minor variances. I won't regurgitate that letter, but I will provide an overall two submission and two-point submission to kind of frame our objection and why this particular proposal, for its third time, is inappropriate. The first begins with the application's history. This background is critical because it explains why the applicant has failed to meaning, meaningfully consult with its neighbors despite clear direction from this committee to do so. And then, secondly, how that failure to consult matters because it impacts and ultimately ma- manifests itself in the updated proposal as it currently stands, which does not represent good planning. And so the first sub-point is on the failure to consult. This is at the first page of our letter, I won't repeat it. But again, as my friend had mentioned, this is the third attempt at seeking the approval of this proposal. Again, for a, a large three-story detached dwelling. The applicant tried to resubmit the same application back in April and that was the basis for the deferral. And I'll just note again for the committee's benefit is that our objection at that hearing was that this was a tactical approach to simply jump the queue, um, and it resulted in the needless expenditure of resources and time. But most importantly, that deferral, which was granted by the committee, was based on a strong encouragement by the committee itself to afford the applicant to meaningfully consult before coming back to the committee with a revised proposal. And that meaningful consult, consult, community consultation has not taken place. The planning consultant has only circulated revised materials to my client. No meetings have taken place. And in fact, my client only became aware of this hearing through his neighbors who happened to check the city's application portal. I'll respectfully submit that this is a tokenistic approach that I, I'll go into in my second submission has resulted in an inappropriate application once again.
I see, okay.
And that part, both part of my submissions start at page two of our office's letter. Again, I won't regurgitate, but I will summarize, there are three main points that I'd like to note as to why this application does not represent good planning. The first is that the application does not maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan. The larger setbacks from the side yard, coupled with increased building length and depth, leads to an overbuilt dwelling. In fact, the new proposal, as my friend mentioned, results in a lot density that is even higher than the density that this committee previously rejected. But the applicant has strategically described the dwelling as a duplex with, which I would respectfully submit is an interpretive tactic to avoid the need for a, a significant FSI variance, which in this case would be 0.99, whereas the permitted FSI is 0.35. So although the applicant isn't seeking that variance, that's important built form context that contextualizes the other variances that are being sought. And so that cannot be ignored because it clearly indicates an overbuilt, overly-dense lot that is out of keeping with the neighborhood's physical character. And so that leads into my second point, which is that this proposal does not maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. The intention of the bylaw is to prevent nuisance impacts from planning proposals and development. This dwelling is larger and denser than the planned function of the neighborhood and it features the addition of not one, but two oversized balconies coupled with reduced side yard setbacks that would create nuisance impacts that this committee should not condone. Thirdly, as a result, the proposal is not desire, desirable and the requested variances are not minor. It is clear that the applicant's failure to consult in my respectful submission has led to increased built form conditions that would result in an overbuilt lot. And those conditions are not desirable. And applicant has not adequately demonstrated that the revised proposal, when viewed in its entire context and when the variances are viewed collectively and cumulatively, does not address persisting adverse planning impacts, including concerns of privacy and overbuild.
Thank you.
And so in short, yeah, thank you. But this is why the committee should, uh, refuse to approve this application on the basis of the Planning Act test.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Okay, thank you. Any question to this speaker? Okay, we, we, uh, we don't have any question for you, so let's, that's all the speakers, right? Yeah, so we, let's, uh, have the applicant back here, please, yeah.
Thank you very much. So I'll try to.
Yeah, you got five minutes to respond and then we, we can ask you a question ourselves, yeah.
Sure. So with regards to the, the consultation, I did circulate the revised, uh, drawings and revised, um, uh, list of variances to neighbors. The gentleman on the phone, um, uh, his client replied back to me that I will review and revert with questions and comments and I received no questions or comments. Um, I didn't hear from the gentleman who was, uh, calling in as well. When the renderings were available, I provided them as well. I also went beyond what was required and circulated my own notice to neighbors in the neighborhood. Did a flyer drop and every house within the notification radius and I received no comments or calls or questions from anybody else in the neighborhood. This is not a neighborhood of modest houses. This is Forest Hill. These are grand mansions, not, well, not mansions, but these are grand, large houses. The neighbor who received variances next door, while we do not have an FSI because of changes to provincial regulation that, that says that if you have two units in a building, FSI does not apply. We are not making that claim. The planning department is making that claim in response to, uh, provincial changes to the Planning Act. Uh, but, so our request, our, what would be our requested FSI, if it applied, which it doesn't, is 0.094 larger than was approved next door. That is not a significant difference, in my opinion. If the rendering could be brought up, the last page of the renderings, please. The, the last page of the renderings basically shows the, you know, the approximate relationship between the, it's, sorry, it's a very large file. It takes a while to load. Uh, it shows sort of the relationship between the two, uh, two of the, the neighboring properties and the, particularly the balconies. It would be my suggestion that the, the, the balconies relative to the windows that are already permitted on the rear wall do not create, I would say, they do not create a, a notable difference in terms of privacy and overlook. You can already see into the backyards, we live in a dense urban neighborhood. You, we can see into each other's backyards already. Just as the neighbors at sixty Hill Home have been able to see into the backyard of the subject property through windows on their side, uh, sidewall and their house projects beyond the rear wall of the existing house. This is, this is a city. We, we have views into each other's properties. The properties behind the subject site can see into its backyard. I don't think that the scale of this house is wildly out of character with this neighborhood. There was a comment about impacts of shadow and, on the, on the neighboring property. Um, we submitted a shadow study, um, if the committee would like to go to that. But in my opinion, this is on the south side of the street. It does not create a lasting and, um, a significant shadow impact on, on the neighboring property. And again, with regards to side yard setbacks, side yard setbacks and building length and depth variances, uh, happen in this neighborhood. It happened on the adjacent property at sixty-four. It happened elsewhere in the neighborhood. And again, side yard setback variances, including on both sides of the property, are common in this neighborhood. And again, the, what we're asking for, um, is entirely in keeping with what is routinely approved by this committee in this neighborhood. In my opinion, we definitely meet the four tests and this is not an overbuild of the property in its context. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I have one question about the, uh, secondary, uh, duplex, low, the lower duplex.
So it, it's, it's not, it wouldn't be considered a duplex under the bylaw. It's considered a, a detached dwelling with a secondary suite.
Okay, you see, that's why I want to clear, because I hear, uh, multiple times.
We did not claim it to be a duplex, we, because it isn't. It's a detached with, uh, a single with a secondary.
So the secondary suite, uh, underneath, uh, is it like, uh, what is the intention? Is it like a?
Nanny suite.
Nanny suite?
Yeah.
It's a big one, eh?
It's, it's quite generously sized, it would be, I would love to live in it, it'd be pretty, it's pretty generous.
I would just, uh, cause, so, but then the, in terms of the light, it's not too much light, the way. It's just, uh, but the size is big, I, I would just say, the, for nanny suite, but it's not considered to be, to be like, uh, grandparents', uh, or, uh, what it could.
I mean.
grandparents' suite, can.
It could be used as such, certainly. I mean, there's no limit on, on who, who is allowed to, to live in the, in the unit. But I would, it's a very generously sized, it's definitely not, you know, like kind of a, a crammed-in basement suite. This is, this is, this would be a good unit, it'd be quite nice to live in, frankly.
And then it's got, uh, uh, its own entrance?
Yes, it has its own dedicated entrance to the rear, which is allowed.
Okay, and, and understand, alright. Any questions?
Uh, just, just one quick, if I may. In the rendering, you know, the rear balcony on the second floor, I know you've said that everybody looks into everybody else's backyard, but there may be, uh, concern about overlook on the, is that the east side?
That would be the west side.
Right in that rendition, right?
That'd be the west side.
The west side.
So the balcony is 1.5 meters deep. It's off a bedroom. I don't think it's going to be a.
Sitting space.
It's not really a sitting space, it's not, it's more of a decorative balcony. However, if, if that balcony is a concern, the applicants don't need it. We, we do need the one on the third floor because that's a emergency egress one. And it's inset into them, yeah. But if, if that balcony was a concern, they could, they're happy to remove it. That would eliminate one of the variances and modify one of the other ones. I, I personally don't think it's a significant overlook considering there's a wind, a large window right there which would provide the same amount of, of overlook. A privacy screen could be put on the west side if that was desirable.
I think that would be the minimum requirement.
We have flexibility.
Yeah, I, I can see that being a concern.
Okay.
To eliminate that concern, I, I think it's something decorative might work.
We're fine with that.
Yeah.
Actually, I do have another question because I, I heard the concern from sixty-four. I, I, I knew you mentioned that all the backyard is facing south, but on the other hand, because of your additional extra length is actually, if you look at orientation, is more or less like on the south side of sixty-four. I, I do, I, I am interested actually looking at the shadow study on the particular.
Yeah, let's bring up the shadow study, please.
On sixty-four.
Be happy to.
If you can prove that there's no impact in.
The shadow study, can you bring it up? So this would be, it's a perhaps a non-traditional shadow study. It's the architect decides to make it look nicer. So this is nine AM, obviously, yes, shadow, just as the...
Okay, wait a minute. What, where's your property?
Oh, sorry, it's the one that has the most detail, kind of in the middle there.
Okay, all right, so, yeah. You see, my, isn't, that is some kind, this is existing, or this is already...
This is the proposed.
Addition, yeah.
It's proposed. That's ten AM.
Yeah.
Eleven AM.
This is in June, or...
In March.
In March. Okay, I can see the date now. Okay, thank you.
The equinox. So basically, twelve o'clock, there's very little shadow left on the property to the west, and by one o'clock, it's, I assume it's gone.
Okay. And this is, is the, is March twenty...
Yes, the equinox, it's the standard.
Is the worst scenario, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is the, this is the average scenario. This is the one that the city of Toronto requires us to use.
Just the, just this...
Yeah, March or September.
Not December, right?
Not December, no.
December, everybody is in shadow?
Shadows by four o'clock.
Okay.
So I do not consider this to be a significant shadow impact. Obviously, there is some shadow impact, but I think it's gone largely by eleven, twelve o'clock.
Okay. And there's significant trees and all that also creating some of the...
Yeah, this doesn't obviously include the trees. There are significant trees along the south, along the property lines. There's a photograph in my, in my cover letter that shows the view of the property looking south towards that and there. So you can see there are some large trees that provide additional shadow, and you can see the windows on the house to the south providing overlook into our property. And so the privacy screen would be on the east side, if you seek to impose that condition.
Yes, okay, I understand, yep. All right. Yeah, that's a good, good thing. I just, in terms of orientation, I would just picture that will be a shadow of addition.
The building, the depth into the property was basically designed to match what already exists on the neighboring property.
Unfortunately, they have, their backyard got cut, they have a triangular backyard, so they're...
Their property, the other side is, it is shallower.
Yeah, not much they can do, yeah. Okay.
And again, building depth in this area is, it varies widely. We are very far from the largest in the neighborhood, probably more closer to the average.
So you said that before you have an iceberg basement, is...
It's been eliminated entirely.
Eliminated, it's only going to be just the basement plan you saw as the secondary suite, yeah.
Correct. Not only did we improve the soft landscaping number, the absolute number, but we also improved the quality of it.
Okay, thank you. Questions from other members, please? No, no, we are ready for, yeah, for this. Okay, now we are in committee now. All right, who wants to?
Maybe I'll start the conversation. If I'm not mistaken...
Mr. By, can you speak to the mic a little bit more?
Sorry.
Yeah, I have to...
If I'm not mistaken, I was here when the, this application came forward and was deferred, if I'm not mistaken, but I do recall the length and depth issue of the previous application. So on the positive side, I'm glad to see a tremendous number of changes that have been made, because the iceberg structure previously, I would never support it. It's, was excessive.
Yeah.
What's before us, the six variances that we're looking at, and I know people are concerned about the length and depth, but the length and depth that we have before us is not unusual. We've had requests for length and depth even beyond, beyond the numbers that are indicated here, so I don't find them excessive. This particular house looks like it's pretty much in line with the one neighbor. The other neighbor, the property is a very different one, different context. Having said that, I know the side yard setback is a concern, but again, the side yard setbacks are not of a nature that we haven't had before committees that have been approved. So all told, I think this is a supportable application. I do not find it excessive.
I tend to agree. When we look at the numbers, you know, adding, what is it, about four meters of extra length would be a lot in some neighborhoods, but you have to take things in context. In this, in this neighborhood and other applications we've had, and even looking at the block and you can see the next door neighbor, it's not. And the other numbers are similarly, you know, pretty small and reasonable requests for this location. I mean, if I look at the application as a whole, it's very much in keeping for what exists in that block.
Perhaps there's another comment that I should make before I forget about it. I know the concern about consultation, consulting neighbors, but it is not the jurisdiction of the committee to require consultations. We encourage it.
Because we can't really enforce it, that's the thing, as a committee.
Exactly, it's not enforceable, it's not before us.
It would have been ideal, and I was at the previous meeting, and I did, and you know, you can look at the minutes, and consultation was encouraged, but I, but my recollection is that it was deferred for the reason that the agent said, which was the iceberg nature of the property wasn't reflected in the length variance, so it was deferred because there was no choice but to defer, because the application before us wasn't actually reflected in the variances sought. So that was the main reason for deferring, and then consultation was also encouraged. And it would have been nice to have seen more, but, but it wasn't the only reason it was deferred.
But there's one comment I would like to make, and I think it's important, although I do not know what decision will come at the end, is that I do hear the opposition from sixty four, and I do understand the impact, not because the lot for sixty two is big enough to allow the development, it's the site context of sixty four, which is the one on the west side, because they have a reduced backyard, and they are, if they have a parallel lot size, similar size, I would say the impact of the shadow, you know, is sort of reasonable, not reasonable, it's not canon, I think it's less. But because of the, this is just, they have a very sharp cut, and that means reduce the backyard of sixty four, that's why the impact feel greater. I must, I must have mentioned this, because I did hear what the opposition is telling us, so I just would like to mention, because it's not to do with, oh, the whole area, these are big houses, big lot, but in this particular pairing of these two sites, they are in the disadvantage of the impact, yeah.
I think you make a very good point, but I, but also the shadow study, I think, kind of assuages it, because, you know, that was a March, that wasn't even a June, you know, a May through August, when people are really going to want to use their backyard, and it did really look like, even given the orientation of these lots, there was no shadow past about eleven AM.
Yeah, I understand, but what I'm trying to say is they have a way, it's not like two lots similar, and then you compare the impact.
No, you're right, there will be an M.
Yeah. But sometimes, of course, we are, if we are in ideal world, of course, then if you're taking the consideration, maybe the length will be shifted away from, that's why they also complain about the setback, side yard setback. So this is the cumulative of the two things that he opposed, and then I mention it only because I have heard them, and I think they are legitimate concerns, that's all.
Yeah. I, I'm, unless anyone else wants to go, I'm happy to move a motion. I, I think you're right that that's the neighbor that's the most impacted, is in sixty four. But, but a minor variance isn't, you know, it's not minor if it's no impact, it's if it's, you know, minor impact, and I think the shadow studies showed that it is minor impact on them. So I would move to approve this application, subject to the condition that the second floor balcony have privacy screening on the east side.
Through the chair, with the previously deferred package, there was urban forestry memo. That was in relation to the first, or the previous application, where they were requesting deferral, but then they did also impose or recommend the conditions of one and two, forestry one and two. That's in the deferred package.
I think those are standard, they, even if they are not relevant, maybe we can impose those, because they're standard.
Yeah, I appreciate the secretary treasurer raising it. Why don't we put them in there? Because urban forestry can waive them if they're no longer applicable, but there's a risk that it's just an oversight.
Yes, I think so.
Probably they had to do with the iceberg home, and they're no longer applicable, but let's put them in and let them waive them.
Okay, anyone second that question? This is by a second, all in favor? I dissent, because I want to give the vote to the, to the opposition. Yeah. Three one, thank you, is approved, three one.
Through the chair, we're approaching our last item. There are a few speakers, so if the members did want a break, this would be a prudent time, but up to members if you need a break or not.
Oh, do we have one more?
Last one.
Through the chair, yes, it's the last item, but there are speakers, so if members needed a break, this would be the time.
I'm okay to...
I'm okay to keep going, yeah.
We will speak slowly, so give them enough time. Okay, so, okay, sorry. The last item is twenty one, which is fifty La Salle. I wish I spelled, did I pronounce it right? La Salle Boulevard is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front integral garage and a front porch with stairs, and a rear basement walkout, and a rear covered deck with stairs, and two rear second floor balconies, and a rear third floor balcony, and also in-ground swimming pool. We have received minutes of the last public hearing, July ninth, two thousand twenty five, and copy of survey site plan for plant elevation, cover letter, and a tree inventory report from the agent, presentation material from the agent, corresponding email with the agent, and heritage planning. We also received reports from urban forestry, we received support from sixty two Eastbourne Avenue, and also sixty seven La Salle Boulevard, and also oppositions from one, two, two Imperial Street. And, oh, we received a whole list of oppositions, and I think that the big, probably will fall asleep if I read all of them, but there are a lot of oppositions, and we will invite everyone who wants to speak to this item, will be, will be able to speak to it. So we also, at the end, the late material, we received opposition from forty six and fifty two La Salle Boulevard.
Through you, Madam Chair. So in terms of the opposition correspondence received, we can just summarize to note that the majority was from Imperial Street, La Salle's Boulevard, Eastbourne Avenue.
Yes.
And I will also note for the record that we did receive a very late councillor letter. Staff can show that on the screen. It's presented on the screen. The councillor submitted a late letter of concern.
Okay. So, all right, so we are ready for the agent, it is...
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent online, three registered speakers in person, and one registered speaker online.
Oh, okay, so for people who want to speak, okay.
Yeah, if you could pull up my presentation material, I'd appreciate it. Yeah, so I'm Jim Pepper from ninety five St. Clair Avenue West, and I'm pleased to be presenting this revised proposal for the owners, their three children, and the eighty-three-year-old grandmother of those kids who will be also living in the house. And the house as well has a home office in the attic story, which is necessary to the homeowners, and you can see that that doesn't present to the street at all, because that home office just has a dormer at the back of the house. Knowing that they need a five-bedroom house with an elevator for the mobility needs of the grandmother and the home office, they purchased one of these wider fifty-foot lots in Chaplain Estates, knowing that that's what they would need. And we built this house trying to very much respect the Chaplain Estates' character, and I'm sure the committee is going to be aware of the positive aspects of that kind of multi-generational and day-use home in a neighborhood such as this. After the last hearing, we revised our plans, taking into account all of the correspondence that was submitted to the committee. We made a reduced proposal, and then we had a meeting in our office to meet with the immediate neighbors, including the neighbors on each side. After that meeting, we further reduced the proposal. So what we've come back to you here with has six variances rather than the twelve that we originally had, and all five of those six variances have been reduced in scope. So this rendering, it's based on survey data and drawings we have, so it's very accurate, and you can see how this house is going to fit comfortably between the neighboring houses on the street. And this house is one point one meters shorter than the existing house that you can see in that bottom right inset. It's also shorter than the house to the north on the right-hand side of the rendering. Moving to the next page. You know we're looking for a front yard setback variance. You can see the front yard on the left-hand side of this image. It's just that very small sliver that projects into the front yard. Notwithstanding the fact that we're asking for a front yard setback variance, our front is still going to be back of the front of that house on the bottom of this site plan to the north fifty two La Salle. We're asking for a length and depth variance. You can see again, a very small sliver, doesn't go back as far as that house to the north. As well, we have a single-story extension, which on most fifty-foot lots in the city would be as of right, it isn't here for technical reasons, but it's set back more than four meters from every property line. Balancing that, we're getting rid of the two-story garage in the rear yard, and we're not putting in a rear yard ancillary structure. We're not looking for landscape variances, so what we're building is very much in keeping with this sort of development of the lots you'll see in the neighborhood. If you go forward a couple of pages, you'll see this streetscape that we've prepared. We've taken great care to do this very accurately, and I can explain to the committee how we've done that, if you're interested, but you can see, the house we're proposing, one point one meters below the height of the existing house, lower than the house to the north. It's going to fit very comfortably between those houses, and you can see how we've tried to make this very much in keeping with that Chaplain Estates' character. Not a lot of steps to the front, but a door at grade. We've stepped the facade to minimize the impact of the garage door, made the garage in keeping with the presentation of the windows. That brick house presents as a two-story house with a pitched roof. Two pages down, there's a couple of other houses in this neighborhood, fifty one, fifty two, forty nine La Salle. You can see how very large these houses in the immediate context present, but I'd particularly like to call your attention to that house in the upper right-hand corner. In the letters of opposition submitted, it said over and over again that what we're doing is creating a precedent, it's going to be a total outlier, that is absolutely not true, that's misinformation that's been spread about this proposal. That house, eighty five La Salle, is on this stretch of wider fifty-foot lots in the southern That house, eighty-five La Salle, is on this stretch of wider fifty-foot lots in the southern section of La Salle. It's deeper than our lot, so it's a bigger lot than ours, and this committee granted it a point-eight-two FSI variance. We're looking for point-eight-zero-five. So that house has a bigger lot, smaller variance, and it looks like it keeps very much in the character of this street. Next page, some other houses in the neighborhood that have larger variances but still keep that Chaplin Estates' character. And then the final page, it's just our site plan overlaid, the next page, on a aerial view of these lots. You can see how we respect that pattern of open space front and back in the street.
Can you wrap up? You have five minutes.
Yeah. I'd just like to say, you know, we're also requesting a balcony variance, uh, second floor for the master and the grandmother's room. If the committee wants to have privacy screens there, of course, we'd have to. Uh, we'd be happy to accept that as a condition, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We probably will hold our question to you. Uh, we want to hear the oppositions and look back to you too. Yeah, thank you. Let's have the next speaker, they're in person now, right?
Uh, we heard now the first in-person speaker. Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi, welcome.
Uh, I'm Graham Brown. Uh, I've lived in Chaplin Estates for twenty-five years, three homes there, and we're currently the neighbors to the immediate north of the proposed development, uh, which you've already seen in pictures. It's a beautiful Richard Wengel house, built about ten years ago.
What's the web address, your address?
So, when John and James Chaplin filed their plan...
Oh, no, give us your address so we can just have the web...
Oh, I'm sorry, fifty-two, fifty-two La Salle's.
Okay, so, okay.
Can we restart the clock?
All right. So you, you, we got it, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have five minutes. Don't, yeah, you have...
So I want to provide some context here because Chaplin Estates is a very interesting neighborhood. When John and James Chaplin filed their plan for subdivision in nineteen thirteen, if I could have my first slide, please. They wanted to create an estate of luxury detached homes, but they wanted to do it in a way, no, I don't think that's it. Please, thank you. They wanted to do it in a way that would make these new homes available to people on a range of budgets. And you can see on the first slide that they arranged lots thirty feet or less on the outside in a ring, that's the yellow, a concentric ring of forty-foot lots within that in the purple, and then at the center, a strip of fifty-foot lots on the Salle's Boulevard, cleverly, with some premium forty-foot lots in a cul-de-sac at the base of Eastbourne Avenue, as you can see in the colors here. Now, this layout matters, and it's why I'm talking about it, because when Mr. Pfeffer gives examples of the variances granted in the estate, he makes no mention of their lot width or where they're located, with the one exception he's just mentioned. Small lots demand larger FSIs for a given size of room, so the further one strays from the southern part of La Salle's, the larger the variances become. He's using FSIs, uh, from smaller lots to justify similar on much larger ones. Eighty percent of the original housing stock is still in place, which has an FSI of sixty-nine percent or less. Looking for new homes approved to the scale he is now requesting, in the sixty-meter radius circle around fifty La Salle's, the generally used area circulated by COA, there is just one small variance for height. Going wider, which stretches north of Tranmere, south of Imperial, and beyond Eastbourne and Collin to the western east, we find one length and four depth variances matching his requirements. We have to go beyond this large circle to begin identifying FSIs as large as those required by Mr. Pfeffer, and that includes the example, uh, that he gave you. It's more than a hundred and twenty meters from the property. One second, my second slide. So in proper context, an FSI of eighty-one is not minor in this area, and it's unprecedented within a hundred and twenty meters of La Salle's, and that's not information, Mr. Pfeffer, misinformation. The average FSI, um, variance granted in the whole of Chaplin Estates is point-seven-four, and in the southern part of La Salle's, it's point-seven-zero. The same is true of his length variance request. Indeed, his ask is among the largest of only sixteen granted anywhere in the estate and drives the need for front yard setback and depth variances too. But perhaps even more dramatic is the impact on the character and spaciousness of the street were you to grant the required front yard setback variance. There has never been a successful application for such a variance anywhere on La Salle's or Eastbourne, and if you were to give one today, that would be a grave precedent. Slide three, please. This proposal is clearly not consistent with the appropriate development of the land. The proposed house is seventeen percent larger than any existing house in the estate and would dominate the street scene. The reduction in front yard setback would bring a very large house forward half of a meter. The photo images, though they may be accurate, do not clearly reflect how the house is a full meter longer than its large neighbor. The number and depth of the balconies create an unwanted and unnecessary intrusion for the neighbors, and there is strong resistance. Twenty-one neighbors, um, um, strongly resist what's proposed, and this has not sadly been effectively addressed through consultation and compromise. And the next slide is probably my most important one, if I could have it up, please. So because there's so much mention of comparable houses on fifty-foot lots, I'd like you to look at this slide. This chart puts fifty-two La Salle's, my house, the developer's proposal and the offer from the immediate neighbors side by side. Please note first that Mr. Pfeffer refers to how his design is similar in scale to fifty-two La Salle's. Clearly, it's not. It requires six variances to my house's one. The house is eight-hundred square feet larger and three-point-four-six meters longer, plus it requires a balcony variance. In his rebuttal, I suspect that Mr. Pfeffer will say we should include our rear garage in the comparison, but why on earth should we? In any case, there's nothing to say the developer will not add something similar to his property later. Our garage is built to code and did not require a further visit to committee.
You have time yourself.
Thank you. If I could finish, I have one important point. Turning to what the developer rejected, and this is important, we're not anti-development. We offered to support an FSI of seventy-five percent, point-seven-five, which is above the average for the whole of Chaplin Estates. We said if he would build his house to code length, we would agree to a two-point-four-six meter addition at the rear, single-story, giving him a total length of nineteen-point-four-six meters. In return, we asked that he set the back, the house back half a meter, um, obviating the need for a front set yard setback. Mr. Pfeffer wrote back rejecting this proposal as significantly impacting the property we're trying to achieve, and he did that a week after he'd resubmitted plans to you without telling us.
Thank you.
Can I just use my summary slide, please? So in summary, you've heard this from every opponent, I'm sure. The variances are small, they're not appropriate, they don't respect the general intent of the plan, and we urge their rejection. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any question to this speaker? Okay. Thank you. Hi, thank you. Welcome.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you for, um, having me.
Yeah.
My name is Diane McCurley. My husband Colin and I live at forty-six La Salle's Boulevard, um, and this is directly south of the rebuilt that we're talking about.
Yes.
Uh, there is no number forty-eight, so just so there's no confusion.
Okay, yeah.
It's just number fifty and number forty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd like to mention first off that the consultation process outlined by the developer was not very consultative. My views, I don't believe, were really heard. Rather, I was told what the vision for the project would be. I'd like to explain our objections to the variances.
Mm-hmm.
Can you go to slide two, please?
Yeah.
The existing houses in yellow are described as two-story, minus on the left, and part of my house is one-story, so my whole house is not actually two stories. Um, at the right, we have the home of my previous neighbor, happens to be the Right Honorable Roy McMurtry, who raised a family of six children and who, over the twenty-five years that he was my neighbor, housed his adult children and grandchildren for years at a time. So this was truly a multi-generational home. I mention this because the developer emphasizes a multi-generational home as though it somehow requires abundant space and very special consideration. You'll see that the current front setbacks here align in these current houses. I've put a green area in the middle. This is the current driveway, and this driveway provides breathing room between the houses, and it's very typical in this neighborhood to have driveway space between the houses. Next slide, please. The excessive size of the proposed three-story new build clearly dominates my house, which is to the left. The new build is eleven and a half feet longer than permitted and two and a half feet higher than permitted. I don't think eleven feet is a minor variance. The proposed south wall of the new build eliminates the driveway space, and it's going to loom in front of the windows that exist today in four rooms of my house, and that's the bedroom, the kitchen, the dining room, and the basement. So suddenly, I've got a three-story wall right in front of all of those windows in my house. Next slide, please. Um, our family makes extensive use of our back garden. If you can see the next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Um, the excessive number of platforms, um, at second and third stories is three times more than permitted. So again, this is not a minor variance, and the result is going to be people, um, overlooking my back garden. So this is a picture of my back garden, and we're facing the new build to the north. I have two giant silver maples and one giant blue spruce in the backyard. The tree on the left here is over seventy feet high and, um, a hundred and twenty centimeters in diameter. The tree on the right is nearly as tall and provides essential shade for my patio. These trees provide a natural shade canopy for four houses and support the city's target of forty percent tree canopy cover. Uh, next slide, please. The trees require seven-point-two meters and three meters of tree protection zone, and that means there's supposed to be no construction activities, things like surface treatment, excavation, root cutting, et cetera. And yet, the developer wants to dig a pool and build a house within the tree protection zones. If you look closely at this picture, you can see that the shallow end of the pool is within the tree protection zone. So they sought out an arborist. The arborist report outlines extensive requirements to protect the trees. I'm not sure how this could be enforced, um, and how do I count on this being successful protection for the trees? The arborist report neglected to include the flat fact that the branches on the spruce are going to be shorn off three stories up to accommodate this new structure. These are trees in my property that are going to be affected. If the trees die over the next few years, how can I be sure that the developer's going to pay for their removal? Surely, plans could be created here, um, that do not require them to dig a pool or a foundation through the roots of my trees. If we go to the next slide, this, this is what I see when I look at the proposal. The, um...
Can you wrap up? Your time is up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, I can wrap up. Um, I would, I would really just like to point out that the build as proposed is risking injuries to the trees. It's eliminating the driveway between the houses, and the impact for my house is, uh, quite significant. And I'd like to just be able to conclude by saying that the bylaws are in place to pro- uh, protect all of the interested parties, and I'm an interested party, and I count on the bylaws. I'm not opposed to development as my other neighbor suggested or said we have consulted or proposed what we would, um, you know, consider reasonable. There are variances in that. I don't think we need to go ahead with variances that are very much out of line with the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, any question to this speaker? Okay.
I just have one, actually. Um, I think I probably know what the answer is, but you've raised the concerns about the trees directly with the agent, and, um, how did that conversation go?
Um, they have been able to suggest that the trees could be protected. And, I mean, how, how, how do I know? Now I think I have to perhaps engage an arborist to look out for my trees on my property because of this build. It's, um, I don't know. I, I think it's, it's a difficult problem.
That's a, that's a forestry condition, are there two?
Yes.
That forestry condition asks us to impose if we're going to approve, which is to injure or then remove all trees that they have to get approval from urban forestry.
The, the size of these trees is, is significant. They're among the biggest trees in the city.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Anna Calvins, and I'm here, uh, representing Martha Courtwright of fifty-one La Salle's.
Okay.
Uh, Martha and Tony are not able to be here today because of, uh, health issues. Uh, Martha and, and Tony agree with the concerns that have been raised by their twenty neighbors as presented in the letters of objection that you've seen on the C of A website. And I've been given the task of highlighting three elements that contribute to the unique character of the La Salle's Boulevard neighborhood and which are directly threatened by the FSI and front yard setback variances that have been requested. And these elements, if not respectfully managed, impact the values that the majority of residents have respected and the neighborhood considers essential, indispensable, and of benefit to all. And these, the three elements that we're asking you to safeguard, and you've heard them already, but I'll repeat them again. First, moderately sized homes, the tree canopy, and water management. Residential creep resulting from every variance requested and approved being greater than the previous one threatens the character of the neighborhood and disrespects the guidelines imposed by the city. It leaves the residents in the miserable and time-consuming position of constantly fighting to defend these guidelines and to protect a neighborhood in which they've invested both financially and emotionally. The FSI variance requested threatens the enormous silver maple that Diane has just, uh, spoken about. La Salle's Boulevard used to be lined with these silver maples, and in the nineteen, nineteen-nineties, we started losing many of them. They'd been planted in the early years of the last century, and it's only with the support of the city's tree canopy program that the Boulevard and the trees are starting to come back. And the last point is the FSI and front yard setback variances threaten water management. As we all know, soft landscape and trees play a critical role in water management, and with the increasing average rainfall in urban development, there's a reduced ability of our properties to absorb the water, and hence, again, the necessity of respecting the bylaws that protect the green space in the front yards and lot coverage of new builds. And again, the proposed reduced front yard setback reduces the percentage of soft scape coverage of the lot. Just to conclude, uh, the Courtrites are in favor of reasonable but not unfettered development, development that respects the key features of our unique neighborhood. The Courtrites have reluctantly supported the compromise variances proposed by the other immediate neighbors, though they feel that even these go further than is appropriate for the neighborhood. Thank you.
So it basically, can I ask you a question? Just summarize what you just, uh, said. Uh, you oppose mainly for, uh, the overall, overall increase of all the variances?
Yes. It's, it's, it's the, it's the number of variances, the variances are not minor, and the precedent that they set, that every time someone comes, the, the, the request for variances is bigger and bigger and bigger, and we... And we, we, even the last presentation on Hill Home, we heard your discussion that, that yes, every house is, is big. Well, right now, as Graham was saying, not every house is big in LaSalle's. And it's very well defined where the big houses are. And, and you must, and we have to respect these, these areas. And not continue to set huge precedents on the ever-expanding sizes.
Okay, thank you. Even if they reduce, they, they have come back. I mean, previously, they proposed something bigger, almost, and more variances. This time they have, you didn't make some variances and then the, the current application, almost, they reduced many of the variances, the height and the, and the depth and the F S I. You still think that is too big, right?
Well, these were huge numbers, these were huge variances to start with. So when you start with a big number and you take off a foot, you still have a big number. So that's the problem. Although they, they say they've made some changes, they're not enough. It's, it's still a huge house. It's inappropriately huge.
You have questions?
I, I just don't think that we got your own address. Do you also live in?
I'm fifty-two LaSalle's.
Okay.
She's also representing fifty-one, I think.
Yeah, she was representing fifty-one, but I wanted to know.
Thank you very much. Do we have someone online?
James, you've been muted. James, you've been muted. I will try to call him. Not available. At the tone, please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up. James, it's showing that you're online, but you're not responding. Staff had tried to phone you and there was no response. Staff are going to try to phone you one more time, so please look out for the call.
James is being muted. If he submit a letter of opposition, maybe you can just pull, if we cannot contact him, maybe we just pull out his letter. If you have any written comments.
Through the chair, we'll have to look. There's two pages of opposition letters submitted here, so we'll have to see. So their address was one twenty-one Hillsdale.
I don't see the separate letter, right?
Okay, James, if you're listening, staff is going to try one last time to get ahold of you. Otherwise, we won't be able to connect. You're showing online, but you're not speaking, so staff will call you one last time. Please look for the call.
Play greeting. I don't think I hit the cup.
Right through you, Madam Chair. After multiple attempts, we are unable to reach the resident or occupant of one twenty-one Hillsdale Avenue. They were registered to speak and interest.
So I guess we have made multiple attempts. I think we just have to move on. Can we have the agent back? That's the last speaker, right? That we cannot contact, yeah. So let's have the agent back to respond to the, the neighbor's concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. This is Jim Pfeffer here again. If you could pull up, I guess, page two of my presentation, the site plan. I'd like to just speak to a couple of the points that were raised. Number one, you know, I heard it said again and again, you know, we're setting a precedent. This is out of scale from the neighborhood, you know. Eighty-five LaSalle, it's in the southern part of LaSalle that was referred to in the, in the neighbors' sort of correspondence to the committee. Wider lot, deep, wide lot, deeper lot, and a larger variance, and it fits in with the neighborhood. And then, yes, you know, if you get a variance on a, and that, that's, so that's, you know, bigger lot, bigger variance. But also, F S I is the metric. So, yes, there are larger lots who are going to fit larger homes, but that's kind of what the bylaw intended. Now, on this plan, you can see that we've shown the two trees that Mrs. McCurley referred to. So, yes, the shallow end of the pool is in the footprint of the tree. But you can see that blue dashed line is the footprint of the two-car garage that has a full foundation, which we're taking out and leaving green space between the fence and the pool and the pool deck where that garage now is. And our arborist is, you know, has spoken, our arborist spoke directly to Mrs. McCurley. And we also put in writing an offer to formalize any kind of guarantees about the condition of these trees. We put that in writing and sent it to all of these neighbors, including Mrs. McCurley. Our arborist is a master arborist. It's the highest qualification for arborists in Ontario. And, yeah, we're taking out the garage where that pool is going to go. And that pool itself doesn't, that tree doesn't get to the house. That other tree is going to protect, be protected. And actually, I staked out the location of this house on the lot with McCurley, Mrs. McCurley present. The height, so if you can just take a look at page seventeen. As a part of our research for this project, we surveyed all of the houses in this neighborhood and the center of the road. Our house, number fifty-two, number fifty, is a sort of second yellow square, kind of central existing house. And all of those houses in yellow are taller than what we're proposing. All of those yellow or orange blocks are houses that are within sixty centimeters of what we're proposing. So absolutely, we are, you know, in character of the neighborhood for height. You know, Mr. Brown said, oh, you know, the front yard setback is going to crush the street. But you'll note that our house is further back from the street than his house, which you can see, for example, on page three of our proposal. You can see his house, you can see our house, and you can see, you can see, yeah, you can see his house, our house, his house, further forward than what we're proposing. And his house is taller than what we're proposing as well. The balconies, we're proposing three balconies. The one on the third floor is deeply inset behind the roof. The ones on the, the balconies on the second floor, we'd be happy to have a privacy screen. They're small. One is off the eighty-three-year-old mother's bedroom, grandmother's bedroom. The other is off the master bedroom for quiet occasional use. And also, just speaking in terms of the magnitude of the variances, the committee doesn't work on precedent, as you know. So the variances that we're looking at for length, for depth, has to be looked at in context in terms of the very minor impact of what we're proposing. If you take a look at the site plan again, you'll see that narrow red sliver is what we're, what, if you take out that narrow red sliver. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm listening. We're all listening, but you're five minutes.
If you take out that little red sliver, you'd be in line with the neighbor's proposal. If you could just take a quick peek at page twelve. You'll see Mrs. McCurley's lot, you'll see the trees, you'll see that garage that we're taking out. And you can see, actually, those two windows that she referred to that are being blocked. You can see those are in rooms which have other windows immediately adjacent to them facing the street. That's on page twelve. And if you say my time is up, I would, I'm certainly willing to just move on to any questions. Thank you very much.
I do have a question. The staff can bring up the forestry report, urban forestry report. See, they have the three conditions, but also they have recommendations. I just got a little bit, I took recommendations up, up another page, maybe, maybe wait the previous page. There's two, four and five recommendations. Yes, four and five, yes, there. You have mentioned, it said that the urban forestry requests it to follow. And, and so that they can.
These are just listing the standard conditions. It's not saying that it applies to this case. The chart shows that it's only one and two.
Okay, that's, that's outside, the chart only showing the one and two, right? Yeah, that's always restricted. Okay, I just got.
In, in terms of the trees, I would like to reiterate that there are, this property has two street trees. And we've deliberately narrowed the driveway at the front of the property to protect both street trees. And there are no protected trees being injured by this project. So we've really, you know, we've done our best, no landscaping variances, no tree injury for this project, which is pretty unusual, actually.
Well, I, I mean, in fairness.
No tree removal.
Yeah, the, the street trees are not of the scale of the trees that are of concern, though. And, and there is, you know, the need for an application to injure. So I do have a question about the garage foundation that you're talking about. So your arborist, they're of the opinion that the roots currently circumvent that, that existing garage? Is that, is that the idea or what's the, maybe help explain the implication of the garage being there?
Yeah, I mean, you can bring up the arborist report, which speaks to this. But I took a very close look at that garage. And I can see that that garage has, has on that side property line, if, a, you know, existing uncracked concrete wall. And because it's uncracked, I have to believe that it goes below frost level. So, you know, you should, and the garage slab itself, and I believe the arborist speaks to this in his report, the garage slab doesn't have any cracks in it, which you would expect to find in the slab of that garage, were there tree roots underneath it. So the arborist says in his report, and if you can, you know, go down to the summary about that tree, which is tree number five. I think he says that, you know, the conditions for that tree will be improved because of the removal of this garage. And, you know, and he is one of the most qualified arborists in the province of Ontario. So, yeah, tree number five, the large silver maple is located in the rear yard of the neighboring property, addressed number forty-six LaSalle's. Silver maple, at this size and age range is considered as a species, to be fair. Tree is also currently rated to be in fair physiological condition. And then, this is speaking to the assessment of the tree, but the impacts, I think, if you go further down. And so, tree number four, tree number five, garage removal, patio and sod installation. This large mature silver maple is in the background of the neighboring property, backyard. The existing garage is to be demolished with portions located within the, portions located within the set and approved T B Z of the tree as are portions of the proposed patio and grassed area. It's therefore requested that the T B Z vertical hoarding locations be adjusted to accommodate these proportions of the project. Concrete portion of the foundation to be removed and disposed of manually by hand. And that's something that's going to be enforced by urban forestry when we make the application. Gravel base of the foundation may remain and be utilized for support of the proposed patio within the footprint. Existing gravel basis to be removed. The existing concrete foundation appears to have included perimeter frost walls installed to a depth. And then, no heaving, and if you go to the next page. Furthermore, by removing the shed and returning most of the exposed area back to a permeable space, water and oxygen may now infiltrate the soil, improving the health of the root zone of the tree immensely. And then, there's, of course, criteria of the pool installation, which would also be enforced by urban forestry. And, and our arborists did speak or correspond directly with the neighbor at forty-six.
Can, can I ask another question about the same thing?
Yeah, that, that answered my question.
Okay. Are you responsible also to protect the trees that on your neighbor's, in your neighbor's property? That's the big tree that we're talking about. You're responsible. When you apply for permit, that, that is the trees that you, you, you are obliged to protect, right?
Yes, we have to protect that tree.
I, I'm not too sure, I would totally agree with you about removing the garage. It's actually an improvement, only because size, that size of tree, the woods are much deeper. It's not about down to the frost line, which is about four feet below ground, right? So the current, the existing woods now actually is much deeper. And although the swimming pool is a little bit further away, but the swimming pool with the water and also the footing is actually quite go quite deep. And I still within the injured zone of that big tree. I do not agree that is an improvement. I'm, I'm not trying to say I know how, how to protect it, but I think that maybe you are a little bit more too optimistic, not affect.
Well, you, you're not disagreeing with me. You're disagreeing with the arborist.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But then there's construction of a pool, as not the same as a, as a existing garage with footing four feet down, right? You agree the pool, the footing is probably much deeper, which is like where the big tree's woods will probably are already there. That you might, you might affect the woods, but.
I think if urban forestry thinks that's a concern, what urban forestry can do is ask, you know, we'll make an application. If urban forestry thinks that's a concern, they may ask for a trench to be dug to expose and inventory the roots that would be present. And if there were significant roots that would cause significant damage to that tree, urban forestry would not permit that work. If, and this is, I've been doing this for twenty years. If urban forestry thinks that work that's being proposed, whether it's, you know, as a right house construction or whatever, is going to, you know, terminally injure or significantly injure a tree on a neighboring property, it will not permit it. So I would not expect urban forestry to permit work which is going to significantly injure that tree.
Thank you. Yeah, you answered that. Yeah.
May I just ask a question? If, I'm looking at the second floor plans, the floor plans.
Thank you.
Just two questions. I think you mentioned the balcony that's off bedroom number two. You have an offer of putting a privacy screen on, I believe it's a south side?
Yeah, so bedroom number two, that balcony, you can see there is about four meters from the property line. But yes, we would be happy to put a trans.
And the other question on the same floor, just where the open stairwell is. This, I think, is it a deck that goes out on the side of the house?
So, one of the things we did when we came back to committee is we reduced the floor space index considerably. And we, we are not asking for any side yards. And we are not asking for any side yard setback variance, but there is currently a driveway on that side. So when we were reducing the floor space, you know, the total floor area of the building, one thing we did was we carved out the en suite bathroom that was in that space. We shrunk the other rooms. And we created a little bit more open space facing that side where the driveway now is. But as it says on the plans, flat roof, no access. So there is no access there. And I can see, you can see that on the site plan, but that's also... And then, actually, on the site plan as well, you can see that gradient area that's the footprint of the third floor. So it's pretty, that contributes to the FSI, but it's not really impactful, of course.
Thank you for that.
So any other questions? Yeah, we're in committee now. No, sorry, it's our order. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Maybe I'll start the ball rolling. If I remember correctly, I can't remember if I was sitting on this panel when the previous application was deferred. But I always come back to the question of what's before us. And before us, we have six variances. And we just looked at a previous, I think, Hill Home. In many of these neighborhoods where we've got properties like this coming up for development, it's not unusual to see the kinds of variances that are being requested. The building height, it's marginally over what is required. The building length and depth, I think the Hill Home was slightly longer than that. So I think overall, when I look at the variances that we have been asked to look at, they're not out of character with what we've seen in the city of Toronto on these larger lots. So I, overall, I think this is an acceptable application that is supportable, given what is being asked of us. And I do think that sometimes it's very difficult to see all the changes that are happening. But overall, I do not see a problem with the variances that are being requested.
My observation for this application is that even the current opposition's the council's letter, for example, is still referring to the previous version, which they had about, they had twelve variances. And this time, I must say, quite impressively, they can reduce to half of the variances. And even the one that they're asking now have been reduced. And I know that the neighbors still think that it's too big, it's too large. But I'm not waiting to show how much then, when I ask them what... They're still thinking it's too big. So what is the sort of, like, a limit or starting to what is acceptable? What is not acceptable? I think this is why it's in front of us to decide whether this is acceptable variances or acceptable increase, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would pick up from there and say the neighbors have come out with a position of what they think is acceptable. They say it's point seven-five FSI. But I look at the proposal and it is a change. It is an increase in size. There are variances being requested, but none of the variances are truly that large. And, you know, change in, our neighborhoods are meant to gradually evolve over time. I don't see this as an evolution that is out of keeping with what could be expected in this neighborhood. It will be different, but I don't think any of the variances create an impact that's beyond minor. The issue that does concern me the most are the protection of those trees at the rear. But I think the forestry conditions should be able to protect for them. And we do have a thoughtful arborist report here. And, you know, with construction of a house of this nature, I think they should have the construction budget to do those things properly. For instance, where they say hand shoveling to excavate near the roots, I fully expect them to comply with that. And for the members of the public that have that concern, if you witness anything that doesn't comply with, you know, those best practices, call three-one-one, and they should be able to help address it.
And we also will impose the...
The forestry conditions, of course.
And they will have to work with the forestry department.
With urban forestry, but I'm just more saying if something happens when urban forestry isn't there, call three-one-one. And they can loop urban forestry in. But that's not to say that I should... More what I'm saying is with a good arborist on this project, that shouldn't actually take place. They should follow these best practices.
Okay. Any more comments, or we have...
I think everything that I've been mulling over has been covered. Thank you.
I'd put forward a motion, but I'm not sure, member Byatt, if there was a privacy screen you wanted, in which case...
I think it was the second floor rear balcony on the south side.
Why don't you put forward the motion?
Okay, sure thing. So I'd like to move a motion to approve this application. Following conditions, forestry one and two. And privacy screen on the second floor balcony, rear second floor balcony on the south side.
And I'll gladly second it.
So there's a motion with the two conditions, all in favor of that motion. Yes, I put unanimously with the conditions. Thank you. And that's the last item.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, the meeting can be adjourned at four thirty-nine PM. Thank you, members. Thank you, staff. Everyone turn off your videos, mute, mute the room. Thank you.